So tonight, I handed you out maps. I got these maps out of old Bible knowledge commentary. Just cut and paste it here. These, this map, if you want to find one on your phone of Asia there, but this gives you the old time Bible names of the areas. Some of these aren't called by those names anymore. But it also shows you where the churches are that we're going to be talking about, okay? They're kind of in bold. You can see the Isle of Patmos there, not too far off the shore there where Ephesus is. We've talked about John, his role. We'll be refreshing that here in a little bit, but there's Crete. So Crete's still called Crete. So that kind of gives you an idea of where they are. Again, if you want to look at, you can get your own map on, but if you want to color these with nice colors and see who can color the best Bible map. Give you something to do like when we were kids. Alright. Well, when some of us were kids. Do they still color anymore in school? Is that a waste of paper and killing the trees? When they're three, yeah. Now it's probably dry erase and they do it on their iPad with their finger, right? What a world we live in, what a world we live in. Right Barbara? It was just yesterday, we were rolling around in horseless carriages. Alright, I need someone who would like to read. First of all, I need someone who can read, not who would like to read. Make sure you know how to read, okay? And if you would read Revelations, chapter 2, verses 1 through 7 for all of us, nice and loud. If not, I'm gonna have to do it. Yeah. Perseverance? Endured? Nicolaitans? So this is the first letter to the churches that we'll be covering. There are seven churches listed. Notice who is, who's writing this from verses 1, well, from verse 1, who's the one that is saying this stuff? Not John. John was just the stenographer. The holder of the candlesticks and the stars, right, which is Jesus. We talked about this last week. He is the one doing this, okay? I want you to keep in mind that Jesus has an active role in what the church does and its success. Because Jesus made a prophetic statement about the church, did he not? When Peter made his confession back in Matthew and he said, you know, upon this, upon this rock, I will build my church. What was his, what was the next statement there, that prophetic statement? "And the gates of hell will not prevail against it." Well, if the gates of hell are not going to prevail against it, I know you guys, you men and women in here think you're amazing people, but do you think you can hold back Satan and all his army? So there has to be a supernatural work of Jesus Christ in preserving and keeping his church and moving it forward. Like we talked about last week, that these, these angels, these messengers, I believe literally are angels who Jesus has appointed to oversee the churches. And I do believe our churches today, the ones that are following Christ, they have angels overseeing their ministry. "The gates of hell will not prevail." Jesus has an interest in the church to protect it and to guide her. Now, before we get into the rest of here about the church at Ephesus, we need to do a little bit of background. Not much, just a little bit on Ephesus, alright? You can see where it's located, not too far off of water. So shipping lanes, being able to transport stuff. In Ephesus was the temple of Artemides. Diana was the main goddess who was worshipped. What do you know about Diana? She's also Wonder Woman, right? You don't know who Wonder Woman is? Yeah, had the bracelets. Yeah. And the invisible airplane? I never saw that on TV though. Just seeing if you got that. What about the goddess Diana, what she known for? Yeah, love, right? So you can imagine what went on in the town of Ephesus if Diana was the main goddess or the false deity they worshipped. The church at Ephesus was kind of like what we would call a flagship church today. Have you ever heard of church called a flagship church? So in Talaquaw, it's First Baptist Talaquaw. Why? Well, because it's First Talaquaw. It's also supposed to be the biggest and most prestigious or whatever, however you want to look at it. Ephesus was looked at as a flagship church. Paul spent quite a bit of time there establishing that church. John, as we've already discussed, spent time at Ephesus, being the pastor and leader at that church as he did evangelism in the area as well. But it was kind of one of those flagship type ministries, flagship type churches. The word Ephesus literally means desired one. Now, that could come from their worship of Diana. It could come from all sorts of things, but that's just what Ephesus really means. Now, this, this passage starts out with Jesus commending the church. Now, remember this. Jesus also told us in Matthew 28:20, "Go and make disciples," right, "of all the nations," teaching, baptizing them. And then the last phrase is, "I am with you always," right? So Jesus is always with us. He's always with the church. So he knows what's been going on. So he tells the church that he is proud of them. The first thing he tells them, you've heard or read it there in verse 2 and so on, is Ephesus was a working church. Have you ever been around a church that wasn't a working church? I have. "I was called to be the minister of some churches that weren't working much till I came. Then I was asked to leave those churches when I became a working minister in churches that didn't want to work." It's just the way it goes. One of them is sold out, the other one is not doing very well. "The church that I planted three years ago closed their doors because the minister that followed me wanted to be more of an academic and not so much a pastor and a working type pastor. So when the mission changed, it didn't hold around." But yeah, I've been around churches that aren't working. A lot of their activities are really focused inward. Real good with potlucks. Not so good with other stuff. Ephesians 2:8-9, excuse me, 2:8 through 10, right? Someone want to read that for us? This is to the church at Ephesus, right? Ephesians, Ephesus, hopefully you can connect that. This was Paul's writing to them, but let's remind ourselves of what it says in Ephesians, chapter 2, verses 8 through 10. "We are saved by grace, so no one can say, 'I have worked my way into heaven,'" but we are saved by grace, not by our works, so that we can then do the mission that Jesus has given us to do. Those works that he has prepared beforehand for us to do, okay? So we're saved by grace, but we are called to work. I talked to a lot of older ministers and, you know, I keep telling them, you know what? There's not a retirement that I have found in the Bible for Christians. And then one day I found it in the Old Testament. When the priest was done being a high priest, he was supposed to retire. You know what his job then became? Teaching the priests that came after him to make sure they did the job right. But he could never be a high priest again. So even then, he still wasn't retired. Guys, there is always work to be done if you're in, truly in Jesus church. And Jesus commends them, as Paul did, that they were working. The second thing that he commends them for, and it was mentioned a couple of times, as you heard, Rachel, read the passage. Their endurance. Their endurance. They kept working. They kept at it. They didn't quit. You ever see a young person that doesn't know exactly what they want to be? Alright, I'm not talking eight or 10. I'm talking 20 to 30 year old. Alright, I'm gonna go to school to be this. No, I want to be this. Oh, I want to be this. I don't even need to go to school. So they back out and they never finish. You know, my, my son finally thinks he knows what he wants to be. Great, finally. But I told him if he wasn't in school, I wasn't paying diddly squat, so he better figure out if he wants to go to work or go to school. I figured while he was in school, he would have an epiphany. Something would pique his interest. Why was school so important to me? Because I wanted him to keep learning. And at school, you get exposed to different people, good and bad. You also get exposed to a lot of different jobs and stuff. So, you know, endurance, stick to it, keep at it. The Christian life, especially if you're going to be active in a church, is not going to be always fun. In fact, it's going to be hard. Not so much that you don't enjoy the work, but Satan does not want the church to succeed. And people are hard to get along with. I don't know if you noticed that. But they're not. And that's why we need to have endurance, is to not quit. The third thing he commends them on is that they were separated. You can't, he says, "They could not stand, or they didn't put up with evil men." In John 17:14 through 15, John, okay, the same guy that wrote the book of the Revelation, right? Talks about that as Christians, we are to be in the world, but not of the world. So how can a church be in the world and not of the world? Like, sing music with instruments? At Church of Christ, we can't use instruments because that's what the world does. Unfortunately, David was an artist, so dang it, I guess he really wasn't saved. So we, hopefully, if you're one of Christ following churches, you believe that sex is supposed to be inside the boundaries of marriage. And man and woman, even more defined. What else? What else should set a church apart? So, I mean, we just said immorality because that's what he's talking about, about evil men. Okay, we read the Bible. Okay, so drunkenness or debauchery, which goes beyond alcohol. It goes into anything of our life that controls us. That can be relationships. That can be addictions to whatever it is, Tupperware, Avon. Right? Men, we don't have addictions because we can stop at any time. We just don't. You know why we don't stop? Because we endure. Huh? Hey, when evil stops being evil, I'll stop buying guns, by golly. So... What's a church that is in, what is a church that is in the world and acts like the world look like? I mean, we talked about immorality. There are churches that definitely put up with that. What else is a church that's in the world and not separated look like? People, and a lot of churches slide into that without meaning to because they get into debt building buildings and bringing on staff. And you know what? If we take this person off, we can't do church anymore. That's just a natural thing. You don't realize how much they tithe. I'm just saying that, you know, a lot of the church plants and a lot of the churches now, pastors are being more by vocational on purpose. A lot of it honestly has to do with the fact that because of computers and stuff, there's not much to do in a building anymore as far as pastoring. There's not. You can get ahold of me at any time. We can talk on the phone. We can talk on the video. Just even keeping records has changed so much that a lot of the legwork, you know, I can study at home. My library's on my iPhone. I take my library everywhere because of the programs I have. You know, it just, ministry has changed. But yeah, you can become a people pleaser church and you didn't even realize it. You just started making little things here and there. Let me read you this. Let me read you this. And this, by the way, this is the book, one of the books I use. The other one I use is a two-part study. I think it's, I think it's MacArthur. Will MacArthur is one of the main ones. This is Tim LaHayes. There's the picture of him there I was telling you about, the old, this was done in 74. I was three years old. Huh? Seventy-three, I was two years old, my bad. Yeah, I'm using it, still good stuff. Alright, separated church. Some years ago while visiting, this is his story, but I want to give him credit. This is an awesome story. Check this out, listen carefully. "Some years ago while visiting the primitive church of Zeltal Indians of southern Mexico." Zeltal Indians, T-Z-E-L-T-L Indians of southern Mexico. "I saw what is meant for a group of believers to observe church discipline. Having only the Bible to instruct them, one man was standing outside watching while the services were being conducted." Man, that's cruel. Why was he outside? I'm glad you asked. "We were informed that this was because he had been going with an unsaved woman in the village." So what if someone came to church and we knew, you know, they were coming to church and they were dating an unsafe person? Would we tell them, well, you can't worship in church with us anymore? "We were informed it was because he had been going with an unsaved woman in the village, which compromised his Christian witness and was considered an offense by that church." They would not allow, or, let me make sure I have the right word there. "They would not permit him to sit inside through the services until he repented." "We were also informed that others of that church were not permitted to take communion or give their tithes or offerings if they were not in fellowship with the Lord." "What a stir this would create in the modern church if such practices were conducted faithfully." "But who can say they should not be?" That's New Testament, actually. I'm just telling you, in the New Testament, it says we're not to be unequally yoked. That's what they're going off of. So if they're armed only with the Bible, it sounds legalistic, but if we're testing things and trying things, I'm uncomfortable with it because that means the sin in my life, or if I sin, then I am now going to be held accountable and I will lose something of value. The flip side of that is, is if I have sinned and do that, I can repent and come back into, back into fellowship. But how many churches actually do church discipline? To do church discipline, you have to be involved in people's lives and know what's going on. And then you have to be willing to hopefully lovingly, caringly, not just call them out, but restore them. See, that last one is the hard part for most churches. They don't want to restore. They want to point the finger and say, "You thinner? How dare you? You ain't never coming back." Or "You ain't coming back until this." No, when they repent, we're supposed to receive them back. But will we turn down money from someone who's not in proper relationship with their eyes? He, he, Jesus says this about this church. He says that you guys are, that you guys have separated yourself from evil men. He also talked about, about being pure, which goes with being separated. Notice this, "You identified the false prophets." Well, what does Jesus care about the false prophets? Didn't the deacons come up, I mean deacons? Didn't the disciples come up to him and say, "Hey, we saw men casting out demons and they're not one of us." Remember that story? And Jesus says if they're not against us, you know, they're for us. But Jesus also told a story, did he not, about planting wheat in a field and the enemy came in and planted tares? Right? And he said, "Don't go pull up the tares until it became harvest season and you'll know who the wheat and the tares are." So this church not only separated themselves from evil men, they also kept themselves pure in their doctrine. Today, this book again, 1973, anybody ever heard the word ecumenical? Okay, what's ecumenical mean? Don't we all worship the same God? I mean, after all, I believe, you believe in a deity, you call him Jesus, I call him Mohammed, I call him Allah, I call him the big spirit in the sky. Here we are in Native American country. I remember the very, a house we bought behind my very first church as a senior pastor. They actually came to Talaquaw for the native holiday and as we were closing the deal, he goes, "Yeah, I really liked the stomping ground and everything and aren't we really worshiping the same great spirit?" And I probably about blew the deal because I said, you know, actually the Bible's clear that you're not getting to that great spirit unless you go through Jesus Christ. See, the draw to be ecumenical, the draw to make everybody happy opens us up for false teaching. And he said, "You guys tried these guys. You made sure that their teaching was on with the writings that you could find and you made sure that these prophets and teachers that came in our name, that they were the ones that they were supposed to be." He goes, "I commend you about that." Guys, today, ecumenicalism runs rampant. I told you, Rick, in fact, I contacted him this last week. He's more of the Pentecostal Brotherhood. Me working with the Pentecostals is not ecumenical. In fact, I hate to tell you this, a lot of the Pentecostals are stricter than Baptists. I thought we were the strictest. No, we're not. Can I work with the Pentecostal? Yeah. Can I work? I've said this before, I can work with anyone that's going to name Jesus Christ as Lord. And when we sit down and we discuss the scripture, we're going to go off what scripture says. But if people are going to say, "Well, I feel..." Yeah, we're done. Why? Because feelings are going to lead us to what I think. Then feelings are going to change. So ecumenical is not brothers and sisters that hold the same basic doctrine. Ecumenical is, you know, as long as we're going to worship the great spirit. You know, God is love. Eventually, we'll all get there. And then we, then we sacrifice our doctrine along the way. He said, "You guys at Ephesians, you guys didn't tolerate that stuff." And then he says, you are, well, this next one's kind of close to pure, but it's not. He talks about them being autonomous. And by autonomous, we're talking about them governing themselves and listening to the prophets and making sure their pastors were proper. And by autonomous, you didn't go in with the Nicolaitans. Now, let's talk about the Nicolaitans for a little bit. The Nicolaitans believed that there was a separate physical and spiritual nature. So by saying that we have a spiritual world and we live in the spirit on Sunday when we're worshiping God, but the natural world really doesn't affect my spiritual world, they could excuse away going to the temple of Diana and indulging in all of that stuff that would go on. Do you see what I'm saying? They could excuse away, yes, I'm still worship God. I believe Jesus is my Lord and Savior, but I can sell you a used car that really is a piece of junk and tell you that it was only driven on Sundays by granny, right? You see what I'm saying? They tried to separate this to allow for this sin they didn't want to get rid of, okay? Second thing, and this is really where autonomy gets into, Nicolaitans really pushed for a holy order. So when I say holy order, what do you think of? Double bacon cheeseburger, fries, nice big strawberry shake. That's a holy order. There you go, hierarchy. They believed in a hierarchy. Why do you think they wanted a hierarchy? What's a hierarchy do? Oh, you're in control now, aren't you? Oh, you've become a bishop. You've got these many families underneath you. They're giving you money or they're providing for you. Woo, this is awesome. They pushed a hierarchy. Pope, bishops, archbishops, you know, right on, right on down the line. They really tried to push that. Now, we're Southern Baptists. We don't have archbishops. We don't have any of that. Anything that we associate with, we choose to associate with. We choose to associate with Oklahoma Baptists. We choose to associate with our local association. We're not required to do any of that stuff. It is, it is our choice. There's no one over us that can come in here and say, "You guys are doing this wrong. You need, you need to leave." Having said that, the early church kind of had something like that because the apostles would come around and say, "Hey, watch this, watch that." We have elders, right? Bible talks about elders. Paul tells them, appoint them in churches. I've been reading through the preaching epistles in my devotions about what Paul has to say to Timothy and Titus about the church. You know, there still was an order. There still was accountability for churches. But the danger of having a holy order is you begin to look to men instead of God. There's a difference between having a teacher and a pastor and a leader in a church and having a dictator, right? There is. And they were looking more toward that power structure. They wanted that in place so they could then command and control people. Guys, I've said this before, understand this. The one person in the universe that can control everybody and everything says humans have free choice. The one person. So if we are trying to control everyone, what are we saying? "I know better than God." "I know better than God." "God didn't give you a brain enough to take care of yourself, so I'm going to take care of you. I know better than God." Whoa, but pastor, don't you know that, man, if we didn't have controls in place, people would open up restaurants that would kill people? No, they wouldn't. Because it would happen once or twice. It'd be on the news and no one would ever eat that place again. I'm just saying, am I wrong? No. But we've got to put in these controls because we are going to be in control. We can fix what God isn't taking care of, we think. And it creeps into our lives so easily. It creeps into your marriage really easily, doesn't it? My wife can tell you the stories of how she tried to fix me. Here's what, here's how she got it, guys. I am her perfected work right here. You think she wants credit for this? No. I'm just saying, she learned that trying to control me was not as good as being my wife and we both grow together. And that's, there's a free one for you in your marriage. Men, women, if your spouse is your accountability partner, they're not your spouse anymore. You don't know my husband, you're right. I don't. But as soon as they became your accountability partner, you are now in control of them instead of you guys walking through life hand to hand. You need accountability, you need to go find someone outside. Now, I'm not talking about don't eat all the Twinkies accountability. You know what I'm talking about. I'm just telling you, your wife or your husband becomes your master instead of your mate and you are only... and you are only given one mate. You can find accountability partners all over the place. You're given one soulmate, one person you're supposed to walk through life through. We're supposed to guard that relationship. Back on topic. Now, Jesus music, Jesus moves into his rebuke. Okay? He moves from, "Hey, you're doing these things right. You know, this is, this is, you know, your employee evaluation 101, right? You, you need to do something. Hey, you're doing this good. You need to work on this a little bit." And then you close with something positive too, right? So they don't leave on the sour note and they leave thinking, "You know what? That was a pretty good conversation, even though you're in the riot act in, in the middle, right?" So he, he has a rebuke for him. He says, and it, and it's only one rebuke. "You've lost your first love." Y- your first love. "You have left your first love." Ephesians, chapter 1, verses 15 through 16. Corinthians, Galatians, Ephesians. There we go. Chapter 1. Reads like this. This is Paul. Okay, when Paul wrote this, this was 30 to 50 years earlier, all right? "For this reason, because I have heard of your faith in the Lord Jesus and your love toward all the saints, I do not cease to give thanks for you, remembering in my prayers that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give you the spirit of wisdom and of revelation and the knowledge of Him." When Paul writes his letter to the church in Ephesians, he tells them they are a loving, a true loving church. And they love all the saints that come through. They show God's love. And this Greek word here in Revelations is, is agapain, or it's a form of agape, that deep rooted love. He's saying, "You have left that deep rooted love." Remember, I just told you, 35 years or so earlier, Paul wrote this letter. So who is Jesus writing to now? 35 years ago. Okay, but after 35 years, what probably happens? It went to who? It took 40 years for everyone to die in the wilderness, right? It's a new generation, isn't it? So what's that tell us as parents? Tell us as church leaders about our church. How are you raising up the next generation? Oh, the parents were good at loving. The parents were good about their passion for the mission and for Christ. But their kids somehow didn't glob onto it. This year, in, in our, in our children and our youth ministries, we're really focusing on getting our kids to serve. This is going to go on Facebook. I hope I don't take anybody off. I was at C U at the pole today. We had 40 or probably around 40, maybe 50 teenagers at the high school. You know, as I sat there and thanked the Lord for all those 40 or 50 kids, you know what struck me? And this could be because of the leadership of the FCA. I don't know. Not one young man led in prayer or read a scripture. Not one. You want to talk about ecumenical? We are not. This church, we've got to get on the board, add them. And we've got to get on board of raising our young men to be leaders. Am, am I against strong women leaders? Nope, I'm not. But I'm telling you right now, we're losing men. If you get men in your church, you'll get their family. If you get a wife in your church, are you going to get the husband? Maybe. Takes a long time, but if you can get the husband to come, you're going to get the family. If you don't teach them to be young men, young leaders, they're not going to be. If we don't teach people to love the Lord and not lose that first love, and if we don't talk about that love, and if we don't fan that flame about that love, it will get lost in the next generation. It just will. The next generation saw their service. Because remember, in Revelation, he says, "You are a working church." That next generation saw their service to the Lord as routine and as what is normal instead of acts of love toward God. There's a difference. As parents, I, I failed a lot of times. I didn't, I didn't explain. I didn't take the time, you know, now looking back, you wish you would. Do I explain to my kids why we do what we do? You know, my kids, I'm sure, "Why do you go to church?" Because dad's a pastor and we have to. I wish they would see it for more than that, but my kids are different. You know, I... Now, Autumn may say it a little bit different. Hunter and Josiah, eh, not so sure on them. They're just different. But it can't be routine. So if they've lost their first love, what's the fix? Well, Jesus gives them the fix. Again, like a good employer giving you your employee evaluation. He has given the church at Ephesus their church evaluation as the head of the church, as the one who's protecting the church, as the one who has, uh, angels protecting them. He's telling them, "Hey, I've been watching. I've been getting the reports. I care about this church. Here's how you fix the problem." First of all, you need to remember. You need to remember. When couples come in for couples counseling, one of the first things I have them do is, "Why'd you guys get married? Talk to me about your first dates. What did you see in each other?" Even when they come in for premarital counseling, we talk about that. "Well, I just can't stand him." Well, that's, that's not true. Because you're married or you've come this far. How did this start? Remember your first love. Now, as we get older, it's harder to walk down memory lane, isn't it? Or it hurts when you walk down memory lane. Because you'll tell your wife, "Remember when we did this?" And she goes, "No, I don't remember." Dang it. And I hope it was your wife and not your previous girlfriend before it was your wife. I'm, I'm, it's funny, I'm not a real touchy feely guy, but I remember more about our relationship than my wife does for some reason. I, I, I can talk about it. I can remember this. I can remember what happened there. You know, maybe it was because I couldn't believe that she wanted to go out with me. I, I don't know. And for her, it's like, ah, he's just a cute little boy. Right? I can turn him into something. Let's see what happens. Hope my wife isn't watching this. I'm in trouble already. Guys, re- remember, remember your first love. Go back to the things that, that were passionate, that you guys enjoyed. That's marriage counseling. It's the same in our spiritual life. Find those things that when you were first a Christian, those things that enthused you, that, that you saw Christ in. Trust me, he hasn't gone anywhere. We're the ones that left the first love. We need to get back at it. Second, he says, is you need to repent. Repent literally means to return, to turn around. W- w- we don't talk, I don't talk about enough about repentance in our churches. Because repent means, "I know I'm a sinner," and we want to hold on to grace. But we don't understand that grace is afforded because we have turned back and we have left the thing that we weren't supposed to be doing. It, to, to us and, and to me, it seems harsh to have that, that man standing outside of the congregation just because he's dating an unsafe person. But I could see from scripture why they did it and they were consistent. And, and their care, their concern was for that man's soul. His, and, and they said testimony. Okay? I, I don't live in, in that area. I'm not in the Indian culture, so it's hard for me to pass judgment. Would I do that here at Keys Baptist Church? If one of you was dating an unsafe person, no, I wouldn't. Okay? Again, I'm not in that culture. But the whole point is, when he repents, and like he talked about in that, in that church, when they stopped doing what they were supposed to do, they were brought back in, into fellowship. You're not going to find your first love. You're not going to get back into the church that Jesus wants you to do until you leave those, those patterns that got you into the, into the wagon wheel rut. To teach grace, true grace and forgiveness, you're on the edge of teaching heresy. Why? Because people will take grace and they will make it cheap. But at the same time, grace is so, so, so wide, so, so amazing that we can do the worst sin we think we can and God will still love us if we repent. Repentance is turning and leaving. See, the problem is a lot of us repent and then we turn right back around instead of turning and leaving. There's the difference. Jesus tells them, "You need to repent. You need to turn. Come back. Come back. Come back." Alls it takes is one step. Right? The example of the prodigal son. When the father finally sees him, what's he, what does he do? He runs at him. Right? He takes the one step, the father's running. He takes another little step, the father's still running, right? That's the idea of how God wants to restore us, wants to come back to us. Repent, return, change that attitude, um, and affection. 1 Corinthians, chapter 7, uh, verses 32 through, uh, 35. Read thusly. Oops, turned one too many pages. It says, "It, um, 'I want you to be free from anxieties. The unmarried man is anxious about the things of the Lord, how to please the Lord, but the married man is anxious about worldly things, how to please his wife, how is it, how his interests are divided. And the unmarried or betrothed man is anxious about the things of the Lord, how to be holy, how to be holy in spirit and body and spirit. But the married woman is anxious about worldly things, how to please your husband. I say this for your own benefit, not to lay any restraint upon you, but to promote good order and to secure your undivided devotion to the Lord.'" So I've asked this before and people kind of give me their order. Where is our devotion to God on the scale of things that should be important in our life? Should be the top, above our family, right? I'm just saying. How do we show our devotion to God? Put in Him first. Which also means we need to be in the organization that He, that He said that we need to show the world His love through, which is the church. How many of you, if I say, "You know what? I like you, but I hate your spouse," how many of you'd want to spend time around me? Why? Well, that's my spouse. That's my other half. All these Christians that say, "I love Jesus, but I hate the church." Are you really a Christian? Because I know what Jesus thinks about it because he's pretty clear. See, sometimes we let our families get in front of our relationship to God. And we think we're doing good. We think we're being honorable. That's not the way it's supposed to be. Divorce rates skyrocket when kids get out of the house anymore. What does everybody always say? When they get divorced, when those kids leave the house? Don't have anything in common anymore. Why? They built their life around those kids. They didn't build their marriage first. It is. Mm-hmm. Man, if we're not investing in our wives, which is against our nature. That's why Paul says, "Men, husbands, love your wife." It's against our nature. We expect our wife to take care of us for whatever reason. It's just, we're, we're cruddy crappy men, okay? That's the way it is. We're supposed to love our wife. We're supposed to give them the thing they need, that affection, that love. Women, you're supposed to do the thing that's hard, is you're supposed to respect that selfish slob that you married. Even though he wasn't a total slob when you married him. We just developed that habit over time because you take care of us so well. We just turn into slobs. Okay, it's your fault. See how I did that? I twisted that. How I repented right there a little bit. But, but do you see what I'm saying? Is you've left that, you've left that first love. We didn't have our priorities right and then we turn around and go, "Why is this messed up?" Guys, i- if that's where marriages are, you know, our kids have left, I don't know who you are, you can get to know that spouse again and not divorce. Well, it's not going to be easy because we said some things. Nope, it won't be easy. But it's worth it. You can repent. You can return. And when you repent, when you return, his exhortation has a promise, right? The end there at verse 7. He, he tells those, "If you have ears, listen." Well, that's weird. Don't all of us have ears? Yeah, we all have ears. Right? So, so what is, what is Jesus referring to there in Revelation, chapter 2? Why would he say, "If you have ears, listen." "To him who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the children." Pay attention. What else? Spiritual. It's a spiritual thing. It's a spiritual love that should flow over into the physical. Can the natural man understand the things of God? What does the Bible say? No. He can't, he can't. That's the Bible. That's not me. It's not Scott. That's the Bible. The unnatural man cannot understand the things of the God, uh, things of God. So who are these letters written to? The church. The one who has the spirit in him. Now, does Paul talk about us quenching the Holy Spirit? So can we take spiritual cotton balls and put them into our spiritual ears and go, "Nah, nah, 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 nah", when God is trying to tell us it's time to turn? Yeah. We can. So that's why Jesus tells them, "If you have ears, take out the cotton, take out the crap and listen to what is being said to this church." Because if you listen and change, you will overcome, right? John talks about overcoming. 1 John, chapter 5, verses 4 through 5. Again, John, when, when I read from John, the same writer, right? He, he's written about this be- before. 1 John, chapter 5, verses 4 and 5. "For everyone who has been born of God overcomes the world." And this is the victory that overcomes the world, our faith. Who is it that overcomes the world except the one who believes that Jesus is the Son of God? "You will overcome if we persevere, if we hold on to our first love, if we repent when we have sinned, we will overcome." That is the promise given of Jesus, first of all, and echoed by John and echoed by Jesus again, and it, here in his exhortation to the church at Ephesus. And he says, "They will eat of the what? Tree of life." That tree that if you eat of it, you will live forever. The tree that shows up later in the book of Revelation, in the New Jerusalem. That same tree, if you overcome, you'll partake of. So again, Jesus being the master motivator, the master boss, if you will. "Hey, you're doing these things good. Man, you guys are working great as a church. You've got some great ministries, but you know what? Y- your service to me has just become ho-hum. There's no longer any passion. There's no longer any excitement. There's no longer any love. Ah, you, you need to return to your first love." That, that's what, that's my problem with you. Return to your first love. And when you return to your first love, let me tell you what, our, our fellowship is going to be awesome. And I promise you that, that we will win and you will spend eternity with me and you will eat of the tree of life, which means you will never, uh, you will never die and you'll never be in suffering again. That's his letter. That's his admonishment to the church at Ephesus. Questions? To the angels of the church? Because they are the messengers. Yeah, they're the ones that, that, that literally are carrying the message to this church. So we talked about, remember the, I think the second lesson, uh, well, actually it was last week when we talked about chapter 1. I believe that these angels literally are angels that are overseeing the church. And he's, he's conveying to these angels, "You need to tell this church. You need to let them know here's where it is." Because again, the angels, we talked about this in the book of Job, angels and demons coming before God, giving an account of what's going on. God knows what's going on. You know? But again, I, I think it's a group lesson. As this angel comes and says, "You know what? I saw this going on." I think all the other angels, because they're not omniscient, you know, they're not omnipresent. They get to hear what's going on. So it's, it's, it's the messenger to get it through to the church. Now, does the angel really go tell everyone? See, see, here's where we get, or is it more of a picture for John? I think it's more of a picture for John. Yeah. I think John ends up being the messenger for all the churches because he wrote it down and then it got passed around. Good question. Anyone else?